I'd like to call the planning board meeting to order please. First on our agenda is to approve the minutes from last meeting. So by Brad.
Second.
Second norm, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I did it. Oh. Approve our lease voucher?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second motion. Second by Tim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First on our agenda and referrals is the branches of Niagara campground. My note.
Dave, one, it's, and so, um, the engineer first project. Also, this is the phase two development of the branches of Niagara campground on Whitehaven Road. It's primarily the western portion of the site. It's in general performance with the original application done a few years ago. This was addition of RV sites, park model RVs, new bathhouse, planting tents, as well as a a maintenance building, a new maintenance building on the eastern side of the site. The idea here is to maintain existing breeds. Divert stone water to the onsite wetland as well as gravelly. Using vegetative filter strips to provide treatment. There's a twenty foot wide stone access road proposed. The idea is to preserve as much trees as possible on the site. Relocate trees as needed as well. Provide screening as well as maintain the visual aesthetics.
When you say park models, do you mean like permanent ones?
Uh, they're essentially RVs that look like cabins. Yes, they would be on the site for people.
I take it this site has done very, very well. Do you have a capacity factor for what you've seen over the years?
Well, Corey.
The site has done well if you want to expand. What's been the capacity factor over the years?
Yeah, we, I mean, summertime, every weekend at full. I would say average year about seven, five percent.
Really?
Loop it out. Well, I have to say, I think that's what you have to do.
Now, what Dave, wasn't phase two when you first, when this first came in, wasn't there, this was a phased?
Yes.
To start with.
The full development was originally shown.
Right. You only did part of like phase one and then.
Right, phase one on the eastern side. It's done and now it's moving on to the western side. It's not exactly the same as it was shown before, but it's in general performance.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Is there a?
I do.
Okay, um, Tim, Tim first, right?
Uh, you said it's slightly different. Is there an increase in the number of units or decrease?
It's not the full development. It's the last time it was originally proposed.
So.
Any question?
Yeah, thank you.
Frank, what do you got, Frank?
Well, I was gonna ask, it says existing fence and dog park, is that where it's located?
Yes.
Cause I was there today and I saw, and I, it seemed like it was.
You gotta talk into your mic, Frank.
Okay, it seemed like it was through the north. From the back, okay, that's where it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
What is the privacy fence and how tall is it?
This is proposed along the southwest of the site to provide screen for the these neighboring provincial properties.
Is it just a, like a vinyl fence, a wooden fence? Is it see-through? Is it?
We were still gonna negotiate that with the neighbors.
Okay. Just curious.
Yeah, just, uh. Yeah, uh, just a comment, by the way, uh, did a terrific job overall with the narrative and, you know, the, the detail and so forth. I guess my only question is, uh, looks like there might be more, uh, you know, site available for yet future development. Is there any notion that that could, uh, happen? I guess it would be on the, what, the eastern side?
This portion.
Yeah.
Potentially.
Okay.
Not right now.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Tim, you asked a question. The original project, I'm a seeker. I don't know if you want to discuss, that was, so, phase one, phase two is completely described there.
Okay, thank you.
Want to take a minute, Tim, to go over that?
Yeah, well, you can keep going.
Does anyone else have any other questions or concerns?
No.
I mean, the project as a whole was looked at as phase one, phase two, upon, um, the exception that was done with the lots on Whitehaven Road. So, you know, you have had a seeker determination about that. What I gave Tim was the original description of the project inclusive of phase one, phase two, so he's got the full counts there.
Yeah.
Now, you said it was less, less.
Yeah.
Parking sites than what was in the original.
How many, how many sites are there in the new one? Do you know?
Total is one ninety-two.
All right, here it said one ninety-six possible in phase two.
So then seeker's good, cause it's lost. Satisfied, Tim?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? Motion from anyone?
I'll make a motion approve as presented.
What's that?
Oh, second by Amy, motion by Bob. Any further discussion from anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Frank, did you?
Aye, aye.
Okay. You're all set? Thanks, Dave, thanks for coming in.
I'm, so, I know it.
Thanks, guys. Uh, next is the proposed zoning change, the roadside farm stands. I don't know how this came about.
Dave, uh, Sheila's on here, she's the chair of the Ag and Market Board.
Okay.
Just came from that. Can you hear us?
I, I can barely hear you.
Okay, hello, Brielle.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you when you speak into the microphone, whoever just did that, thank you.
The only, the only thing I came up with was, uh, four oh seven, one, four, five, one. E and F must be a minimum of twenty feet from the street line.
Yeah, since we talked about that at the long range planning committee, Dave, we did have some subsequent conversations. Um, our board meets again on Thursday, and I'd like to review this with everybody and make sure that, um, everyone is good on this. But I'd also like the planning board's input because of the way Grand Island is, right? It's, you know, some roads are curvy and some roads are, there's ditches or there's sidewalks or there's setbacks or whatever. We really struggled. We wanted to make sure we put some guardrails around how close to the road it was. But we weren't really clear on, you know, there is no right of way defined in our zoning code. So we really weren't sure on what the best thing to do was. We put this out here, it was a little wishy-washy as we discussed on the long range planning committee. And I'm kind of thinking at this point, and I've run this by a couple people, not the full board yet. But maybe the better way of doing it would be to say from the asphalt line and ten feet versus twenty feet. The twenty feet makes me nervous, I guess, from the asphalt line only because of how ditches are placed in various areas and R one As. So I guess, does anybody have any input on that?
Yeah, I, uh, I think, you know, obviously roads vary in width in terms of right of way, Sheila. And, um, so I, I think, uh, you know, as opposed to street line, it, it ought to be some distance from edge of right of way. Uh, wholly on, obviously, the owner's own property. And, um, you know, whether that, the distance from the edge of the right of way is ten feet or some other number, uh, I, I think is open to, uh, you know, some further discussion, obviously. Um, I had, um, some questions for you though, because in terms of some of the, some of the language, you know, it's not perfectly clear. I, I think I can kind of figure out what some of this means, but in the definitions, um, two things. It says the sale of prepackaged food products and non-food agricultural items with respect to prepackaged food products. What exactly does that mean? And where's it grown? You know, who's it manufactured or formulated by and prepackaged by who and where and all that type of thing. So I think, you know, prepackage is obviously a blanket statement that could cover a lot of waterfront.
Sure.
So I, I think that needs, uh, some more definition. The other thing is non-food agricultural items. I mean, you know, potted plants are a non-food agricultural item. Um, I could probably think of one or two others.
Made of alpaca wool.
What's that?
Socks made of alpaca wool. That's kind of what we were going to, was just
Okay.
Things that are agricultural in nature, but not food items.
Okay, come from an animal and, and, uh, you know, um, re, I guess constituted or whatever.
Um. Jumping in here, I agree with the chairman and what Bob is saying. Distance from the edge of the road, twenty feet is way too much. By twenty feet, you might be obscured by half their vegetation in their property, so you couldn't see anything. I mean, I think ten feet is a reasonable amount from the edge of the road so that you have a sign there.
Yeah.
And the other question I would have about non-agricultural is all these stands that we're seeing now, right at the edge of the road for firewood. And is all that firewood, fifty percent of it coming from their property or not? Is that included in this?
So in the right to farm law, law, you know, wood is, uh, an agricultural product. The byproduct of wood is a, is an agricultural, is considered an agricultural product. Um, I can't state whether everybody that's selling firewood is selling it from their own properties. I don't know. I know of a couple stands that I know for sure are, but I, I couldn't speak to everybody.
I, I know, I know in the ag law, it was, you're supposed to harvest the wood from your property.
Correct, that's correct.
Fifty percent. So I can go buy firewood from someplace else, bring it to my home, split it and sell it as long as it's fifty percent.
You can.
Correct.
It's law.
And then also when you talk about distance of from the road, I'm gonna get to you one second about this, this is from the road. You're supposed to provide adequate parking. So I'm thinking by Norm, by your house, there's a fellow selling honey. So when I stop there to buy the honey, I had to park on East River, climb through the ditch to get to his little stand that he's got there.
Which is no more than ten feet from the edge of the road.
I don't think that's adequate parking or safe.
Yeah.
And I would agree with that.
Think they should have to park in their driveways. And they're, and, and again, if you're gonna build something in Erie County's, let's say Erie County's right of way, East River, they're gonna have an issue with it.
Right.
They don't want anything in the right of way. And the reason I know that is I had rocks brought in for my own new home project and I got a letter from Erie County and said, hey, they're in the right way, get them out. So when we go ten foot from the pavement, in my particular instance on East River, I think I'm thirty feet plus or minus from the pavement to the right, to the edge of the right of way where my property begins.
Well, that's gonna be a huge issue then, because there's not only agriculture projects, you've got book stands being
Right.
ten feet from the edge of the, you know, of the road.
Wouldn't it be fair? Wouldn't it be fair to say that their stand has got to be on their property? And their sign could possibly be in the right of way.
David, that's the reason I came up to the, to the mic right now. I, I don't believe we are allowed to say, hey, you know, Erie County Road and, uh, you guys can, you know, we're, we're talking about enabling legislation that's saying people can do things. I don't think we have the jurisdictional authority to tell, to create a law that says you can put stuff in the county right of way.
I agree.
Um, you know, that's gotta need to be ferreted out. I mean, you're talking about permits from those agencies. If you're creating parking, if you're creating structure, if you're doing any of those pieces, I don't believe our law, you know, can be created to supersede any of their requirements. So, I mean, I think anything that we're dealing with needs to be outside of right of way.
Right.
Yeah, completely. I mean, I know the town, you know, the town could look at jurisdiction within their, you know, their, the roads that are there right of way. But we couldn't blanket, you know, East River, Whitehaven, Long Road, you know, Picket County Road, baseline. Any of those, we can't suddenly step in and go, well, here's rules that says you can be in the county right of way.
Well, whether it's a county road, state road, or, or a town road, for example, uh, you know, I think it ought to be out of the right of way. And, uh, of course, there's a, a hot potato going around right now with a hundred and twenty or so people, um, residents of Staley Road that signed a petition about safety factors, you know, on Staley Road with all the traffic going back and forth to the pharma plant and delivery trucks, et cetera, et cetera. Not only that, but you got delivery trucks all over the place now. I mean, you got, you know, the obvious, the Amazons, FedEx, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, I think we gotta respect the right of way regardless. I think any parking has gotta be on the, you know, the vendor, if you will, or the owner's private property with, with, with proper access.
Almost seems an aspect of occupation.
Well, it, it can, yeah. I mean, a lot of these are, let's face it, they're hobby farm type operations. Uh, so they're not a commercial kind of a, kind of a venture. And, um, so, you know, I think, I think we gotta be pretty definitive and respect all those uh, rights of way, uh, again, access and egress onto and off the road. Um, you know, uh, on some of these roads, and I'll, I'll get to another point, by the way, in a minute, but on some of these roads, um, you know, the speed limit might be forty, but people are tooling down there at fifty miles an hour. You've got sight lines that are impaired and all sorts of things and.
Well, just, I mean, if you think about it though, if you do say that it has to be um, off the right of way, this is gonna be a code enforcement nightmare.
And it, it's probably gonna be a residential nightmare too, because how many people actually know where the right of way ends if they're on a county road versus a, you know, a town road? I, I don't know that anybody would know that necessarily.
We went through this, John, go ahead, Frank.
I'm sorry, we went through that several years ago with real estate signs.
And town.
And political signs. And the town tried to say, hey, you can't put a real estate sign in the right of way. And how many feet it had to be away from it? And I, I said, I told Larry Cook, I said, well, if you look over in the Falconwood, where should I put it? Next to the couch or, I mean, you don't have that many feet from the right of way, it's in the living room, right around the house.
Yeah.
So.
That's why we struggled with this line, because we fully.
It's a tough line. Generally, the telephone poles are close to the right of way, generally speaking. Cause generally you have to give national grid eneasement to put a pole.
Yes.
They don't put them on the right of way. They put them on your property next to the right of way.
Yeah.
So that's kind of a, a decent rule of thumb. You know, but it's not totally accurate and I couldn't. I, I, and then, and when the county redid East River Road, a pile of us on East River got legal notices from the county to remove anything in the right of way. Rocks, uh, light posts, uh, anything that was an obstruction that someone could hit with a vehicle and cause some type of damage. So if you have a roadside stand, and I believe you have some type of size of what the stand could be, it, it seems to me it's gotta be on their property. And then now we're gonna, we could argue about where are we gonna put our sign to tell people, hey, I've got a roadside. I'm selling eggs or firewood or whatever, that's a little stand or on my property. But you're, you're gonna have to let them know that it's, you're not gonna be driving by.
Those people attention to their, I, I stand, drive around the island, see them from right by their elbow.
Right. Yeah, there's, I can think of one on, uh,
Does that?
On Stone's point.
Stony.
He's right up at the road.
Right, so, does it make sense to like strike this line? And, uh, we were trying to make it simple for code enforcement, simple for residents, you know, simple for, for the, the varying properties on Grand Island. But I guess we, we're kinda, and it sounds like you guys are struggling too. I'm not sure what we say, except I do like, I do like the on your own property, but do we have to define where?
Yeah, I, I, just to clarify, the street line or the right of way line is your front property line. And if most people know where that line is.
A front yard setback, but since this is a temporary structure.
Yeah, a lot of them are on a little trail or something. Is, is this become an issue that we have to, that this needed to be done? Cause there's so many problems with it or something? It's pretty true.
So, yeah.
Your stand is on their property. For me to pull, to go to that stand, I would have to pull in their driveway if it's right off their driveway, which would give me a safe place to park.
Right.
I'm not picking on the guy with the honey. I go there all the time, but I thought, I thought to myself, the one winner, I'm climbing through that ditch to go get uh, eight dollar jar of honey and I'm like, this is crazy, like I'm half in the road and I'm climbing through the state ditch to go to the honey stand.
You can't park in his driveway?
Amazon driver that pulls over and gets out.
I guess, but I, I just think as a safety thing, he's delivering to you, it's a little different if I'm buying from you.
Well, and I would also have to say that you, you can't limit it to egg site, uh, to roadside farm stands, to any stand. I mean, you've got these book stands, there's a number on the island.
Yeah.
With our.
Right by Bob's house.
Five, five to ten feet from the road.
That's actually a ways back, I think he's got it behind the pole where it's located.
Is it?
I just recently saw it, I think it's a fair, it's a fair ways off the edge of the driveway.
But there are other ones which are very close.
There's a little pantry, somebody's got a little pantry out there with canned goods.
Yeah, that's the one by me, yeah.
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 So, yeah, I guess to answer the, to answer the question though, why are we doing this? Which is a very good question. Um, part, uh, it, it's in the implementation matrix for the farmland protection plan that we've put together, so that the town has adopted. So one of the things that was kind of lacking previously, except there was something about signs that said roadside stands, but really nothing else. And so we're just trying to kind of stitch up the holes that are lacking from, um, a right to farm community. And, and this was one of them. That's why we, that's why we did this. But no, there was no problem. No one's had a problem. No one's complained to my knowledge.
I, I guess, John, I agree that we need to stay, to stand on their property.
Right.
Use their driveway for you to park.
Yeah, but they're not gonna, they can't control where people park.
I, I understand that, but at least if you see the sign, the, my firewood halfway up my driveway and I've got an honor box and you're gonna come and buy a five dollar pile of firewood for, for Halloween, you would pull in my driveway, get the wood and pull out, it would be safe. And then I, in signage, can't we put like a little A-frame sign in the driveway, just setting in the driveway, so you don't have to deal with some type of sign post in the right of way? It would just be in their driveway if someone was to hit it and it could just knock it over.
No, different than our realtor open house site, could have just a little A-frame sign.
Right.
Right. But if, if you go to all this extent, aren't you just gonna stop people from doing this?
No, not really.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Uh.
Not, not only that.
I sell firewood, wouldn't stop me.
I, I agree, just, I would be well enough alone.
Yeah, not, not only that, but this whole, this whole thing about, you know, the property owner doesn't know where their property begins and the right of way ends and so on and so forth. As far as I'm concerned, it's incumbent upon the property owner to know where the right of way ends and their property begins. If, if they don't, too bad, I mean.
Well, they can always tell.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the, the, the. Yeah, the road's sixty-six feet.
I mean, I'm all for the stands. I mean, I, I buy from a pile of them myself. I mean, I'm all for the stands and for people, I, I don't know if I like that fifty percent rule if I'm a hobbyist. I can understand if I'm a true farmer and I'm doing that ten thousand dollars a year in sales.
You can pass this lot and then Susan's vegetable stand at the VFW is gone.
No, that's grandfathered in. We specifically asked. That, that, it actually falls under something different than a roadside farm stand. It, it is not that.
Well, not, yeah, not only that, but it's, uh, I mean, it's on VFW property.
Correct.
So they're, they're leasing Suzie and, you know, her crew for X number of dollars, uh, the right to strike their tent or put up their tent. Yeah.
But it's not a city feet from the road.
And it's in, it's in the right of way.
Yeah.
I don't think it's in the right of way.
Yeah.
Pretty sure it is.
You think so?
Yeah.
Well, that's a whole nother, I don't think that falls into a roadside.
Right, but I mean, if, yeah.
Business thing, that's, that's up to code enforcement to handle that.
I don't want it to go right by my space.
My, my, my recommendation, and I said this at long range as well, that the stand should be on their property and use their driveway for some form of perk. It's not gonna cost them anything.
So you're thinking strike E where it says what the setback is and the distance, et cetera, and just say the stand needs to be on their property?
Correct.
Yeah.
And change the.
Next to their driveways.
And change the, um, parking or add to the parking, um, that parking should be allowed in their driveway?
Correct.
Okay.
But that's, that's my, my thought.
Yeah, I mean practically, practically speaking, it's not like, well, I, I shouldn't say that. I was gonna say it's not like, you know, they're gonna have five cars showing up at once.
Right.
At any given time, but they might, who knows? Um, so the extent that, you know, that hobby farmer or whatever is gonna be real busy, they need to make accommodation by throwing down some pea gravel or something on part of their lawn, so somebody can pull off. You know, the other, the other thing that jumped out at me immediately was as we know, in terms of, um, permissibility, I'll call it, for, um, permitted accessory uses, uh, whatever you can do in R one A, you can do in R one B, whatever you can do in B, you can go to C. C, you know, if, if it's good in C, it's good in D, and so on and so forth, all the way down to R two, R two A. And, um, for that matter, I think, uh, R three, R, R two, R two A and R three all refer back to whatever is allowed in R one D. I think we gotta give some more thoughts, more consideration to just what we're going to allow in terms of the size, albeit a temporary use of an accessory structure in somebody's yard, cause R one E is basically sandy beach lot, Falconwood lot, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so to put up a temporary structure, and let's say you could put it up for the season, cause you're selling, I don't know, honey or, you know, herbs or potted plants or something. Um, you've got, uh, a temporary structure that is for all intents and purposes, two hundred square feet, it's about two thirds the size of a one car garage. Um, so, you know, I think we've gotta give some consideration to, as we ladder down into particularly into R one C, R one D, R one E and so on and so forth, just what it is we're gonna allow in terms of size of, um, accessory structure.
Yeah, and, and that was why, sorry.
To move this forward, um, may not be in agreement with me, but, uh, I don't believe, I'll, I'll make a motion that I don't believe this is a big enough issue that we need to change our zoning law to accommodate. That's my motion.
You making a blanket statement that we don't need to do anything?
Correct. I don't think, I don't think it's a big enough issue at this point that we need to make a change in our zoning law to provide for this. So I haven't heard of, and no crashes in front of stands, there's been no fatalities or anything else.
Until there's a big run of those alpaca socks.
Well, there, you know, there's.
That's my motion, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
I'll second that motion. Brad's gonna second, all right, let's, discussion. His motion is to not go forward with this at all. Any discussion?
Yeah, I can't, I can't agree with that motion.
Well, we, that will come to the vote.
Well, that's, all right, well, that's my discussion.
All right, no further discussion, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All against that motion?
Aye.
No. Opposed, no.
So, one, two, three, five against, two, four, two.
Me, Amy.
Amy, Frank, uh.
Norman, Brad was a yes and the rest of us were nays. So that motion didn't carry. So let's keep moving forward here. I. She, Sheila, is this something that you're just gonna take our input at this point?
Yeah, I was looking for your input, like I said, I, I know that what we had originally written up, we've had subsequent conversations, we got a meeting on Thursday. I'd like to be able to take your recommendations back to our board and come back with something that's a little cleaner, I think the only things that, at least that I heard and, and I just wanna make sure that that's accurate is really concerning the making it on their property, the adequate parking in the driveway. I don't think I heard anything. Um, and again, this is for R one A, it specifically says our permitted structures in the R one A and we definitely will address the um understanding that there's hierarchical zoning, we will, we will address everything else, so this is strictly for R one A and says it. Is there anything else that we need to discuss that you're?
Well, Sheila, Sheila, when you say hierarchical, I assume you, you're talking about R one B, C, D and.
Yes, yes.
And so on and so forth as well. Um, no, I, I, I think, um, you know, we can't look at R one A in a vacuum, I think we've gotta look at what we allow as uh an accessory use uh in total and look at, again, are we gonna allow an accessory structure of two hundred square feet in an R one E? Uh, or an R one D for that matter, or an R one C, I mean, you know. There are R one Ds, there are R one Ds up and down Stony Point Road, for example, that are in um uh, you know, they're pretty big lots and I'm sure there are some ag district properties in there and people wanna sell their stuff. But then there are R one Ds in neighborhoods that are, you know, eighty by one sixty and um and for that matter, R, R one C, which is basically a hundred by two hundred or thereabouts. So I think, I think we, you know, we need to look at these others that are uh referred to uh in a series, if you will, and uh make a decision as to just what the heck it is we're gonna allow.
Yeah, not to exceed two hundreds.
Yeah.
Let's, that's.
By twenty, that's a.
I, I think.
Yeah, sixteen by thirteen, again, uh, to me, that's about two thirds, three quarters the size of a one car garage.
I mean, anytime I've been to any food road stand, they can't be four or five feet by two or three feet deep, you know, fifteen square feet.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't see why two, two hundreds, I mean, even firewood is uh sixteen by, by eight foot, if you're going for the face cord.
Well, do you really need a shelter or, or a structure to help?
Leave it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's.
I think a two hundred square feet shield is a little big.
Yeah, and we.
Can't think of anyone, does anyone, if someone can correct me, does anyone know of any roadside stand around the island that you've been to of that big?
Yes.
There's one on.
Stony Point.
Where on Stony?
One on Stony, it's pretty big.
Yep.
I know who you're talking about.
Yeah.
Where, where's?
On the east side.
Yes.
Going from Stony from uh.
Between Whitehaven and Staley.
It's on the east side.
Okay.
Those larger lots.
Yeah, yeah.
They got, but I think it's way back, way back off the road.
Yeah, because he actually put parking in.
Cubicle thing.
Yeah.
I would also make an issue, do you have enough personnel from a code enforcement standpoint to go and uh surveil this and keep it in check?
Well, Nor- Norm, I don't think we'll ever have enough personnel in code enforcement to go after, you know, every little. Right.
Right.
As simple as possible, David, if, if our motion doesn't carry them on their property and supply parking in their driveway.
Well, Sheila's gonna go back to their board and then take what we're saying and then come back with something else.
Yeah, just.
Sheila, is that, is that your thought process here?
Yeah, I'm gonna go back with the recommendations that we just discussed about the property and the parking, yes.
Okay, so we don't really have to vote on this, we're just making our suggestions, Frank.
As long as we're bringing this up. As, as long as we're bringing this up, I, I was just thinking that uh it probably shouldn't just be for farm products. It should be for books, the whole works, what we're trying to do is make it safe for people. But doesn't make any difference whether they're selling farm products or, or books or kids selling Kool-Aid. Uh, it ought to be on their own property and people park in the driveway, I don't think that's a lot to ask. As far as, as Bob's point, I think you could probably do it in A, B, C, D and E. As long as you're off the sidewalk, you're on your own property and you have a driveway to, to a car, and I can see e- even E.
Well, I, I, I live in an R one C, I sure as hell don't wanna two hundred square foot.
Well, that's the other.
Next door to, you know.
How big are we gonna make them?
Well.
I mean, maybe you had to look at how big it.
When you're talking, I mean, didn't it say temporary?
It is, it is temporary.
Temporary?
Correct.
I mean, temporary, you know, if you look at a growing season, I mean, that could be May to October.
I mean, actually a shed is not a permanent.
Nothing to offer in there.
Well, if you have a small pantry that's there to help people that need canned food or something, that's there all year round. They're not very big, but.
It's not a farming.
But I, I, I would agree with Frank, you could say roadside stands, not farm stands.
Yeah, I agree. Someone asked me, it's almost funny, can you sell Kool-Aid? And I said, no, it's not a farm product. Lemonade's okay, exactly, lemonade is okay, as long as you have a lemonade.
Tell, tell that, tell that to a ten year old little kid. Come on.
Sheila, Sheila, it says in here, the sale of prepackaged food products. Does the health department chime in on that?
Yeah, there's um cottage law, there, there's cottage laws, cottage food laws, so people who sell people who sell food from their house, peanut butter cookies or something like that, right?
Okay.
They have to follow those laws, Erie County and New York State laws.
Okay, okay, that, that answers my question, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, anybody else have any other recommendations?
Prepackaged?
I'm sorry?
Are eggs prepackaged?
No.
Come that way.
No, they come out of the chicken.
Thank you, Bob.
Anybody else have any other suggestions?
I mean, there's a lot of that on the island.
Yeah, there is.
So I guess, Sheila, I guess the biggest things were the building on their property, parking in the driveway. And we thought that the, the two hundred square foot size was way overboard.
Okay.
And not just, not just farm stands.
Well, the not just farm stands part, that, that's not our code to change, right? Like this is uh completely in line with what we're supposed to be doing for the farmland protection. Um, and, and you'll see throughout this, it specifically addresses agricultural products, so I can.
So, your egg board can present it for that and the town board can amend it to all stands.
True.
So there's no issue.
Yeah.
So then, so Sheila, I guess that's another thing that they're asking for, all, all stands to see however.
But that's not on her, like, she can't do that.
That's gonna be a town board. At their, at their time.
Okay, anybody else have anything else to give to Sheila? Okay, Sheila, we'll wait to hear what you just come back with.
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Okay, communications received and filed and the report on long range planning committee by me is uh basically what we just went through, cause that was pretty much the last meeting. So, we're gonna move forward to unfinished business, Adrian's custard and beef, are you folks here? Please come to the stand. Okay, so there was nothing in our package.
It was two months ago.
Yeah, last month, but.
Two months ago.
Oh, it, it wasn't in this current package, it was in our last package, okay. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have it. Okay, sir.
Originally, um when Adrian's church was up there, we updated the site plan at that time.
When I connected you all, scooch over and talk into the mic.
When Adrian's was first purchased, um in accordance with your outdoor seating of four oh seven dash one sixty-two. We updated the site plan and show outdoors, and there was some question at that time, and that was done in well, December two thousand and nineteen. There's a question at that time about pedestrian safety in accordance with this provisions. So we redeveloped site plan. Um, there was a question about the location of the picnic tables upfront. This study, they're thirty-eight feet from the curb line and they're over fifty-seven feet from the edge of pavement, which is well outside the state right of way, that's outside the clear zone. And the safety precautions put in, you've got a six inch barrier curve, redirect straight line, signs have been implemented, spike has been implemented. And basically we're saying a reduction in the speed, people going in and out, the times have really been good. We did allocated definite crosswalks, and I think that with what we did, evaluated the safety measures put in place or existing, the fact that um being the tables are seasonal, the umbrellas out there are all week. In order to move a table, you've got to have a very strong person pick up that umbrella that goes along with it. So they're not, so they're well outside any, very beautiful travel zone. We've got uh, two events, five public back curbs, these are things that are identified, I've been a traffic engineer for over forty years. The license professional engineer, I'm an expert, I get asked by, many times by the attorney general to be state, state government expert. So I do a traffic analysis, which is my history, and there was no warrants or any additional measures to look at other than striking the signs for slowing down, and I feel as though that in accordance with the zoning, outdoor seating, which basically says uh same modifications, so we add outdoor seating, we also made a plan shown proceeding in the area of the premises used as well as showing any impacts and traffic flow, that adequate provisions for pedestrian flowing. You must notice, back in this will provide back in um equal of the ship, to the town, on those. And the chair is the safety review on it, all that information for the zoning compliance as well as measurements for, for the tables of card and offsets, there's one. And I think we're satisfied on the requirements of town and as for acceptance of the site plan, this is, this is.
Go ahead, Frank.
I, I kinda remember this now.
Can you move up, Frank?
I kinda remember, problem was, I believe, isn't, if you have indoor seating at the, at the time and then you have outdoor seating, the problem, I believe, was it wasn't enough parking.
Yes, it was.
Okay, that was the issue, I believe, if you took, and I guess there was an issue about the, the uh how many people sit at a, a bench, one of those benches, and we said six. And, and it came out more, not enough parking, and there was a discussion whether it's four or six. And that was the issue, I think the issue was all about parking.
We did a parking analysis, under some plans, so right here, for indoor activity. We've got the floor area, max patrons, the workers, restriction, parking spaces required is twenty-nine. For outdoor activity, we had sixty, next to, we get workers. Therefore, our required spot was fifty-four, what we're providing is sixty-one. So we've exceeded the minimum number of parking spots required for that type of establishment with the expected patrons and the turnover. I mean, these are transient people, not all there at one time.
Okay, sixty-one versus you only need fifty-four, right, okay.
How many tables do you have outside?
Uh, I think we have uh ten, eleven, twelve, fifteen, twenty. And they're very spaced, they're spaced out, about ten feet from each other, twelve feet.
Twelve tables and six people a table.
Sat at one of those last night, when you say happy.
Yeah.
And, you know, those aren't shown on here, those are seen. We bet, they've actually, in the original site plan's mission, we rearranged and gave you more space between the driveway, so.
I, I think that was part of a problem at one point, too, but some of the tables were really close to the sidewalk and it looks like they brought them back.
Oh, yeah, so the big issue was out to the edge of the curb line where the entrance was.
Right.
To their credit, they moved them away from there, they created more of an area for the people waiting, you know, customers waiting in line at waste their orders, they've kinda cleared, cleared that space and the stripping, I noticed the stripping signage last night was a
That's a plus.
Significant, significant change.
Thank you for doing that.
Visual thing coming in and I'm watching traffic while I was sitting there last night. The lemonade stand.
Bob, I didn't, I haven't been there recently, so what do you mean by stripping?
They've got a striped crosswalk across the parking lot and signs cautioning of, I, I don't remember what it said. Whatever, like, you know. You know, it's a visual stripping on the page, and you see it.
It's very obvious.
It was on our site plan, it was always proposed, but we wanted to make sure that.
I, I think another thing brought up too was we were looking for some type of outline on the site plan to say, this is where the tables will be in whatever you decide to do.
They are designated with offsets from the curb line.
Right.
As well as noting here from the edge of travelway for the state.
I, I understand. So you've got like a box area of where.
I didn't shade them because we have too many contrast lines and everything.
I think they were sure brought that.
They are designated by offsets with dimensional lines on here, to the closest.
How many parking spots again?
Sixty-one.
So I mean, if you had six people at a table, not coming close to.
The table seats six people, there's some that only seat four.
Are there?
Yeah, there's high toppers with bent, with chairs, that's, you know, it's a square, it's a small square cube, so it's it's gonna hold four people, or they're dragging chairs from another one, which means then, it's the same, not, you know.
Yeah.
The, the number's fixed.
But I mean, between the number of picnic tables seating at least four and the high toppers, I mean, do we have enough parking spots?
Because according to the zone code, um section four oh seven dash one thirty-three, attachment three. We require us one space for three seats and one space for a hundred fifty square foot customer area and takeout service, that's one space.
I, I think, I think. The exterior is not a table.
I think the, the confusion on our part is you've got sixty out. How did you break that sixty? How'd you come up with that sixty? Like so many picnic tables, so many high toppers.
It's doesn't, well, the total spaces, uh, it's broken down indoor activity, outdoor activity and workers. So it's been designated, but many workers are not on a busy ship. Um, what our expectations are, I mean, these are.
I understand, that's sort of what my question to you was. How many picnic tables do you have and how many four person tables do you have?
My, 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 I think what he's leaning at is the cut, so you determine the, the load by applying what equations?
You've got ten, thirty picnic tables.
Ten.
And but you've got four high tops, that's met in forty.
And in, and indoor seating.
And indoor seating.
Yeah, but, but you had sixty out, so you've got four times four and ten times four? You're saying that the picnic table only holds four people?
Outdoor equity for sixty for patrons, for workers.
Right.
How's that numbered up?
In my parking spaces is two seats and one space for a hundred fifty square foot.
That's, that's what he's, one space for every hundred and fifty square feet, it's not a table count, it's not a
Okay, that's what I'm getting at, okay.
But those criteria were set off.
Right, so it's not a picnic table, six people times ten.
No.
It's a different formula.
Actually, what it comes down to is.
Yep, I got you.
Customer area and takeout service within the building, you know.
That, this is, this is my question. And you give me your input. I've been around town and there is outside seating, it's Blackberries, Tim Hortons, two come to mind. And they have some type of fenced area and a cement pad and it's outdoor tables out there. So how does that fall into your?
We are well without, well, outside in the, uh, service on requirements based on forty-five speed, mile an hour speed limit, signs on for, for the unloaders. We've got trees out there, four inch kind of trees, we've got utility poles that line the property. Those are actually deterrents for your vehicle coming in at fifteen degree angle.
I, I, I understand that, sir, and I know that's your expertise, but if I'm there with my group of soccer kids after soccer and they're eight years old and they're all fired up after they won the game and I'm taking them there for ice cream and they're running all over, a telephone pole in the tree is not gonna stop a child from running towards that street if they're playing chase or whatever. I, that's what I'm getting at, like normally seat, outside seating areas are fenced, if I take you to Bender's project on Niagara Falls Boulevard, all outdoor seating areas are fenced in in some, in some fashion.
But when you introduce them to pick up to, you know, a fence, boulders or anything, you're introducing a fixed object into an air vehicle's way, which has other liability concerns and issues. This is why they're called high gills, not fair grills, you know, along the road, um, because they redirect. And, pardon me, being a former resident engineer responsible for being on the border. There's no warrants necessary to put up any obstruction around the road.
I'm not saying.
Enough outside the clear zone.
I'm not saying along. I, I, I think you're misunderstanding me, I'm not saying along the road, I'm saying around your picnic area, your picnic, your designated area. Of where you're putting the picnic tables.
You've got a plant stand out there, you've got trees out there, you've got those protecting the patrons from the road.
But not the patron, but not the road from the patrons.
Well, it's enclosed, it's my house. I could be running around, running up the road and hit.
I understand, I got that, but it's a public place to take people there for food or ice cream and. I'm just saying that any other place I've been to has some type of fenced in area. How we want to accommodate that fenced in area, if it needs to be done, I don't know.
The fence area is basically more of this protection and to keep people from.
I'm trying to keep the kids.
Well, running along your road too, I mean, you've got confined, you know, the uh, entry and exits.
Well, that's a, that's a plus.
So, but in this case, they were purchased a property set down and, yeah, this is state.
Yeah, but when they.
I'm aware of any child, well, under parent control, run, wrecked the album, could have run into, ran out of water.
I, I, I'm sorry, Frank.
Is that a requirement that outdoor dining areas be fenced in?
I don't know.
No, it's not, it's not a, it's not a brand name.
I don't know the answer, Bob Westfall, do you know that answer? Because Casey's not here tonight.
I speculate, I would be a yes, but.
It was never brought up in the church review process, too.
I, I, I don't think it is, it's.
Whatever the.
It was brought up at the first review.
I know.
Well, I don't think it's in the code book, is it? I did. I, I brought, I brought mine.
You didn't find it in there, Frank?
I didn't look until you brought it up.
Just I'd seen you. It's uh.
I've seen a plan, yes.
This has been on our agenda for.
Couple of years.
For a couple of years, we had no idea, I mean, none of us have any.
Well, this is like last month that we entered, because I didn't know we, you know.
So I mean, I, I couldn't possibly vote on this without looking, I don't have it in front of me, so I don't have.
I mean, we looked around, I did have two copies, small copy, one large.
And I mean, at, at this point. If we table this in the next meeting, it's not going to affect you because we've been, you guys have been up and running and running without it.
Yeah, we've just been trying to get it with you all since, you know, December of twenty nineteen.
Right, but I mean, then COVID came and then, you know, so I, I don't think giving us time to look at everything that you submitted because we don't have it with us. I don't think that's really going to affect you.
I think too, a- as, as I recall, and again, it's been a couple of years and it's unfortunate. Dave Ducher is not here, but one of his main concerns was protection of the patrons. In other words, the proximity of those picnic tables and, and the outdoor seating from. The driveway in and out, that, that was his main concern and um. Again, it's unfortunate he's not here because he, he bring it up again.
You've got a six inch period curve, and by law, you can have a utility pole, two feet and a curve. As a clear option, utility pole. Anything within the, you know, you're talking about your approach this way, anything within the approach, even a mailbox, I used to send letters to the postmaster general. Their mailbox, our mailbox, outside roads is actually an approach, and we do that because if there's an issue, there's a, you know, wrong size. Mailbox, career post, brick, steel, and something happens, they're liable.
Yeah. A- again, as I recall, his issue was not with respect to proximity to the roadway right of way, it was with respect to proximity to the driveway, you know.
We've offset those, we provided, you know, the nearest table is over thirty-six feet away from the six inch barrier curve. On the fifteen mile an hour maximum probably, and if you're doing fifteen, this would no exception.
I mean, I was just at Tim Hortons and they have that, even tell whatever they're getting this time. And there were kids out there running and throwing those things, and that's pretty close to the sidewalk.
Well, that's Tim Hortons, that's not either.
No, that's, I'm talking about if that eight. I was in Tim Hortons riding through and watching the kids run around, but. But I mean.
I know the one question was. The tables to their private entrance and exit. And then another question was the tables at one point, now I realize you moved them. They were closer to the sidewalk. And, and I, and that was also the issue.
The recommendations from the original one, we. Moved them, we secured them, we did analysis, we scraped it, we added some.
May I ask a question? Do you have from, from long range standpoint, do you have any? Ideas that at some point you'd want to put gravel or pavement down? And, and have a fence around that area to make it easier for maintenance and just. You know, just have it clearly defined that area.
I'd like to eventually have more concrete and a covered awning and yes, that's true, but that's not anything I can sort of do like.
So what, what month were those plans given to us already, you know?
It was two months ago.
Two months ago.
Yes.
Was the traffic study in that, in that paperwork?
It's on right this time.
Because it was all just tables, so.
And now it's a great other thing, you know, safety review.
So when, when did you submit those, those files? April?
Twenty twenty-two. Original submission was December two thousand and nineteen.
I, I'd like to make a motion that we just table this until we can have it all in front of us, because I can't vote on this without seeing it.
They have a full size drawing.
Yeah, like it's, it's not going to affect them whether, I mean, they're up and operating, they've been operating for two years. Without the site plan approved, that it's, we're not stopping them from conducting our business, I just think we should have it in front of us so we can see it before we vote on it.
But we did have it in front of us last, uh, last meeting or two meetings ago. And, you know, it's incumbent upon us to review those things before, and the fact that. Uh, it uh, was taken off the agenda is really not the applicant's fault, I, I can't remember.
But it was, there was nobody here to discuss it, I mean, if we had questions at that point, we, we couldn't have gotten answers.
As, as soon as we got notified, I.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so I mean.
I was out of town, I was not able here, I mean, I had plans of being preserved, I just did not come there to take a seat.
So anyway, I made my motion.
So the, the safety review, is that what you're referring to as your traffic study?
Yes, it's a mitigation and review of the traffic and what's been done and what needs to be done.
Sir, this is something that you've created? This is true. And said, and are you going to stamp this drawing?
Yes, I will, I have every intention of planning to stamp it, originally, I wanted to talk Ron to see if we were addressing all of this concern. And I never got back to him, I got this letter saying, last month, I should show up. But I was, wasn't happy, snipping. Twenty twenty-five.
I, I couldn't find anything about fence in there, there's no renovation. As far as Brad's, as far as Brad's coming, it's always a problem, there's a lag between the time that the drawings are in April or whatever. And then the next meeting, even once is the one, you don't know whether it's coming up, it's unfinished business, if the guy's going to show up.
Right.
Or what, so it's always a problem, but kind of somehow we have to deal with it. You, you don't know when it's coming and you have to remember something that.
Right, okay.
Months ago, so that's, that's always a problem, so I don't see that, just being holding it up.
Okay, so Brad, you made a motion.
Maybe we can change that later.
Your Brad's motion?
I, I just said table it for, until we can review the material and look at it for next month.
Is there a second on Brad's motion?
I'll make that second.
Warm second, any further discussion? All in favor of Brad's motion, the table?
Aye.
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 Amy's an aye, all against tabling?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, Carrie, so we've tabled you to next month so that they can, the board can have. Appropriate drawing, and if it's possible, you could stamp this for us.
I will provide stamp copies to.
It should be a.
How many do you want, sir?
We need uh, nine for us.
Is it small set or do you?
That's fine, that's.
Give one for good luck.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I have every intention of sending it, but I provided this to Ron, people just to get his input to.
I understand.
Not wasting your time and my time.
Right, I understand.
So, and so.
Yeah, I, I'm like you said, I'm, I'm sorry, we didn't know you were coming in and. This has just been floating on our agenda for a couple of years, so.
Yeah, last meeting, it was.
Like two days before the meeting last.
Yeah, last meeting, we were notified, I think, right at the meeting, that, that you were asked to be tabled.
It was quite a surprise and I just.
Well, I, I, I'll just make the comment that if it shows up on our agenda as unfinished business, we've got to go with the expectation. The party will in fact show, so you got to be prepared, so. No, 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 I, I understand, but I'm talking about today's agenda. That's why I, I would vote nay in terms of, of tabling, I don't want to table it, okay? But the, the, you know, the, the vote has been cast and uh. Again, if anything, it's unfinished business, it's incumbent upon us, if it was given to us a month ago to, you know. Read up on it and so forth.
Our lean, is it possible that we can, do we need to make a motion to move them to number one in next meeting? So he doesn't have to wait, we need to make that motion?
I guess you could if you want.
Dave, Dave, you can basically open the meeting and move it and just.
At that next meeting.
Yep.
Okay, so that's.
It's unfinished business, it'll be down at the bottom of the list, but you can literally at the meeting, make the motion to move it first, let this board do that vote and.
Thank you, Bob, so that's what I, I will do for you, sir, next meeting, I will make the motion that you be moved to number one, so. Hang out here all, all night.
Is it October third?
Uh, October, uh. Well, except, except that it'd be a Tuesday because, uh, you know, the Monday, I think, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the next meeting will be a Tuesday, the eleventh or something.
Can I just make a suggestion here that you take another advisement that there, there would be some positive. Imagery if you had a, some sort of barrier around the picnic area, be it a, a shrubbery. A, a, a picket fence or something like that as far as containment. To keep people within that area, that's just a suggestion.
And that's not something that we're opposed to. Something that can be done in the future, or maybe a couple of years to have the money to do that. That's fine, we did the signage and we did parking lot this year, so we're not opposed to keeping our customers safe, that's my priority too.
I, I think that's a big part of our priorities, having some defined area that people would stay within. And it could be, you know, it could be nothing, a split rail, a split rail fence.
What if it's just. Yeah.
Okay, so to put a little picket fence.
Even if you just put something along that driveway, I mean, just.
Hang on, man.
I'm sorry, just maybe even shrubbery to his point, around like next to the driveway only.
I want to be working on landscaping this summer, next summer, and I'm not opposed to something like that, but again.
Doesn't have to be major, just something like visually barrier friendly, you know?
You can buy small boxwoods that are five bucks a piece, you know.
Kind of, kind of people, kind of people.
You know, down from your picnic area to.
Yes, I agree with that, and I appreciate that.
You know, something that wouldn't cost you a lot of money. Well, at least it would be.
But it's a visual barrier, right?
A little bit of mulch, it would be a visual line.
It could be a split rail fence, I mean, just something as a barrier.
Those are cute.
I think the fence is more dangerous with kids trying to climb.
Yeah, climbing it.
Right. I've, I've been there with soccer kids.
All right.
Kids are wild.
No.
I mean, if you're, if you, to your point about, are you trying to control cars or people, I would think they'd want to be more containing the kids, the people would be your.
Yes.
You know, but like, it's a visual barrier, so kids won't necessarily want to hop the, the shrubs, because, you know, they've got prickers and stuff. I know, I know, I have kids too.
Not, not only that, too.
I was just a suggestion.
Yeah.
Not, not only that, but to Mr. Lidle's point, if somebody's coming into that driveway at fifteen miles an hour, they're going too fast. You know, I mean, much too fast. They'd be crawling.
But it's nice in a nice tight roadway where you don't really want to do that, and normal people don't.
They really legally could have wider driveway, but this point to the traffic comment.
Yeah.
Our code, our code, our code would actually require it to be wide, that, that site is pre-existing, that's like, because it actually doesn't need our dri-. Our driveway entrance is actually supposed to be wider than that, and yet we're talking about, we want it slower, we want it slower, yet, believe it or not, that one doesn't meet our standards.
It's like, it's a little different.
Yes.
You know, it's a state highway too, so.
Okay, so we'll, we'll see you next month, I'll make the motion to put you right up front so we don't waste any more of your time.
Yeah. If it's any consolation, uh, love the custard.
Great place to enjoy it. Well, roast beef is wonderful. Thank you, folks. Motion to adjourn.
So what, what is this one time just for us?
That was just a communication and I think that is um, about the, I believe this is JB Earl, the.
That's the Radisson.
Yeah, the, the Radisson guy, yeah.
You, you amongst other agencies are notified of the town board. Potentially, it's a good party, so, you know, you're going to be solicited for comments on that, rather.
Okay, uh, motion by me, second by Brad, a discussion, all favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye. Turn her off, please.